Okay, I'm starting to fall out. Steve Heron.
Here.
Carol Hongkong.
Here.
Jay Jones.
Here.
Lexi Murphy.
Jeanne Grant.
Here.
And that means we have a forum. Thank you. Attention of guests. Hi, everyone. I know some of you are on the agenda to speak here at some point. And the rest of you, do you have something to comment on?
I do.
Okay, Glenda.
I have a question. I noticed that all the trees that are being taken down are being placed on the lot on Broadway and Maple. I was just wondering, since that was designated, am I wrong, for the fire department? Do they plan on building the fire station out of the sticks and hope the big bad wolf doesn't come and blow them down?
No, that's ridiculous.
Or what are they going to do about the trees?
That stuff's not going to stay there.
That's not staying there.
It's just like a staging area for, because we don't have enough room out at the living room.
Yeah, I figured that.
So, and I have contacted somebody that may be coming to chip them, so they might chip them all the way to, so.
Okay, I just, it was, I was just curious, because it's, it's full.
Isn't that unreal, how many?
Yeah.
Holy Moses.
And we're only half done.
We're probably a little more now. Okay, anyone else to speak up? To approve the agenda, before we do that, I would like to revise in that we would like to move up one of our guest presenters and situations. Item number 21, we would like to move up to between eight and nine. If that is allowed with everyone, let him make his part and be all gone. He has long days already too.
I'll make the motion to do so.
I'll second. All right, so we've had a motion by Steve and a second by Carol to amend the agenda to move up item 21 to between items eight and nine. Do we have any other discussion on that? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor of approving the amended agenda, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. That's all ayes. Motion carries. Agenda approved. Approve the minutes from the 10-16 regular meeting. Carry your packet. Any corrections needed there? I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Carol has made the motion and Jean has seconded to approve the minutes from the 10-16 23 regular meeting. Does anyone else have any further discussion or corrections on such minutes? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor of approving the minutes from the 10-16 23 regular meeting as presented, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. You're all ayes. Motion carries. Minutes approved. Payment claims, you do have the purple claims in your packet and you should have the, set up. A couple additional ones out there. Is she up?
Yep, I got it.
Yeah, all right. We give a couple additional claims that came in from the fire department. And the other one is from the, the other grant.
Yep.
I'll make the motion to approve. Approved the claims report plus the additional claims. All right, Jean has made the motion to approve payment of claims. All claims presented tonight, the purple claims report as well as the additional. Does anyone support that motion?
I'll second it.
Carol is seconding. Any other questions or conversation related to claims? Okay, all in favor of approving payment of claims, all claims presented tonight, the claims report in purple and the additional claims, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. All ayes. Motion carries. Paid. Received bank reconciliation journals. What do we have? Four of those so far? Well, we have good news and bad news. The good news is the majority of all the transactions from back to present have been accounted for. We had three months of bank recs that were done in the computer and we can't get it to print out correctly. So we put a call into software and they're supposed to call back tomorrow. So they're close. Very, and then you should be able to put it together for the actual charges report. Starting, what's it, August of last year? Yes. Great. Sounds good. Then all they got to do is balance. They will. And it really, it is quite the task. A lot of things were entered incorrectly and double entered and... I know you work on it a long time. Lot of sorting out. Okay, to item 21, which consider additional charitable investment, and we have Brendan here to speak.
I don't know where I'm supposed to stand, so. My name's Brendan Olson. I own Treeback Tree Service. We've been the ones taking down trees for you. Want to comment really quick on your comment. We actually asked the city, because we knew how much we could do, that they just need to come up with a different location for the time being. And you guys appreciate that. I want to start off, what I have to say with just a precursor on it, is I'm a very blunt guy. To put in perspective, we've taken anywhere from three to 5,000 trees down since April 1st, and we probably have 5,000 trees to go on our list. And that's between Sioux and O'Ryan County, a little bit on the outliers. So I'm not here to solicit more work from you. I'm here because I want to leave this meeting with you guys going to other communities, going to other people and saying, you know what? Those guys are in it to treat people right and give the facts as they are. So we've taken down probably in the neighborhood of 60 trees since we've started. We still probably have, I'm just speculating, $2,500 of your original budget to go. There's days that we would work through the rain, we would take that into consideration, treat you fairly. And yeah, there's days that we've had employees gone or whatever. We reflect that in our price per day as well. You, unlike other communities in Sioux and O'Ryan County that we have worked in, have a different kind of problem than other communities. The ash board is progressing through both counties quite fast. However, none of the ash trees in any of the other communities are completely dead like Paulina has. What we have found, and actually, I didn't even know where Kelly lived, but it was right next door to Kelly, and I kind of asked around a couple of neighbors on how long the tree had been dead, and they said two to three years. That tree in particular, we broke off a branch that big with our machine, which is pretty crazy. I mean, there's a lot of force there, but that's showing the rot in the tree. And I, I mean, I'm new to this too. I'm not an arborist. I just take down trees and I take them down well, right? So I'm curious, if you wait, how much more dangerous do the trees become? And that plays in two different things, right? It plays in the liability of taking the tree down, and then also plays to the fact of how fast can the trees come down? And for us in particular, speed is everything, right? We want to give a good product, being the removal of trees, no matter if any of us want to spend money on removing trees or not. We want to be the most productive for our clients and do it at the most reasonable price that we can do it at. I think of myself as the Walmart of tree removal, right? I want to give a good product, not exceptional, but a good product and for a reasonable price. And I'm just doing volume. So what I would urge the city to consider, again, not meaning the work, and I don't know what I'm going to tell people behind Paulina, is to keep us here to remove the trees. There is probably 60 gone. I think my initial count was around 135. So you're about halfway. However, in the other half, I would say the trees are larger, which takes a little bit more time. So you might be more around a third amount of the time here. I don't know. I mean, obviously, if you look at the lot down there, we can move a lot of trees fast. But it's so hard to speculate when you're dealing with that number of trees. There's so many different factors that play into that. We also have two stump grinders that the rest of this week, we will probably be grinding the rest of the stumps. I know Kelly said that they will take care of cleaning up the stump grindings, which will save time on our end. There are some trees, or a couple trees that I talked to Kelly about, about them completing that are around power lines. Not that we can not do it, but again, looking at the time factor, it takes us time, just like it takes him time. So why not save on those more complicated removals? Kelly has been awesome to work with, I want to put that out there. He's always, if I ask for something, he's right there doing it. And, you know, we have that relationship with a couple other cities and employees, but not all the cities we work for. Do we have just somebody there feeding our needs constantly? So I appreciate it. But that being said, I know it is a, it is a large amount of money that you have already spent, and I'm proposing to you that you should maybe consider spending. But there are a couple things that have to go into that decision too. Number one, when we set the daily rate for this year, it was when we first got this machine, and we were speculating on how much we could do volume wise, and we give cities a discount compared to what we typically do. That discount is larger than what we feel we need to completely eat. So this fiscal year, we're honoring, we have nine different communities that we work with. We're honoring the daily rate that we originally said, but after we leave, that we knew that daily rate is going to increase. So right now, if we stay, we complete more trees, you're getting it done for a cheaper rate than if we come back next year. On top of that, if the trees progress how like I think they might, in being more brittle, that takes more time. So you're going to get less trees down for a higher price as the year or time goes by, you know? So with all that being said, I want to put this kind of as my last remark, and I'll be open to questions, is that we had kind of a, call it an emergency situation, that we had to send part of our crew to hospers for the morning of last Thursday. They took down two trees and they didn't, in boom truck operation, which we're fairly efficient at as well. And they weren't very difficult trees, and we did, in that same amount of time, we did eight to nine trees completely. So if that puts in perspective of what even us being a tree service boom truck operation compared to a city boom truck operation, you know, it's just a value that I don't want you leaving without knowing the facts, you know? And that's why I asked to come tonight and just put in my two cents to you. Like I said, I feel for you because you're not like other communities. Other communities are having us remove ash trees, but they're alive, and they're trying to get ahead of it. You guys didn't really have that option because we didn't know the annual dashboard was moving in as fast as we did and killing all the trees as fast as we did. But we are in the situation we're in, so.
I will mention that, you know, we took down the tree and it took us three hours to take it down. It probably would have taken that machine 20 or 30 minutes to take it down. So, I mean, we got to take that into perspective too.
I discussed that with him last Monday. I watched him take a tree down in less than a half hour. It would have taken you guys five hours, and it was over a house too. And it's just, I think we need to spend the money to get it done, especially if they trees, if you can get them down.
How many guys you have working?
It varies. What I write, what I rate that daily rate on, and before I start deducting money off the daily rate, I want at least four of us on the job site. Right now, we have eight working. But yeah, we have employees that are sick, or they have kids, or, you know? And I don't know if you guys have the same problem. It's hard mining employees. So...
That won't work.
Yeah. You know, and we have a great group of guys, and, you know, we, I actually called Kelly today. I go, yeah, if you guys were to do something, like, we actually added a value today. We took the day, we needed a maintenance day. Well, we have, you've seen our wood truck that's been around. We have a second one that is complete and is in town now, which speeds up the process because we can haul faster. So yeah, you guys are getting a very good value. Though, one thing I will say off the common about just the big trees compared to all the trees, is that what, again, a small tree might take down an hour or two even, we can have down in 10 minutes and some...
Five. I'm due.
Right. I mean, so, so you kind of got to take consideration too, is like, yeah, you're spending money, but you have that, you have the fact that if we get hurt, we're fully insured, you know? I pay a crazy amount for work comp in the state of Iowa. It's the highest class of work comp in the state of Iowa. So if you have city employees do it, well, you're taking on that risk too, you know? So I would, I would push for you to just say, you know what? Get all of them down. The one thing that I probably should ask, and in that, before that decision's made, is that when we did the initial count of marked trees, we're at like 135. I think we counted an extra 25 trees that aren't marked. Somewhere near Park, there was a couple missed through the boulevard, and Kelly's been having us just hit the ones that we come across that aren't marked. But that number is probably a little bit higher than 135 as well, you know? Just so everybody's on the same page and completely clear, you know?
It's a bigger number than you even had at first.
Yep.
Because I think we're at 125.
125, I can't say for sure. We had a list way back when. So, and now we got to get the people that still have one of their own galleries to move them also if they're getting that bad.
A lot of those are getting done too.
Are they?
Yeah. He's got them.
So I'm not, like I said, I'm just blunt, right? So I give cities a good deal because I have walk-ons like crazy, right? And so, yeah, as we're driving down the street, people come up and they're like, hey, can you take my tree down? Can you take my tree down? Well, it's advertisement, you know, for us.
That's on your list, remember?
You are. For a sweet, I think. We want to get it done before the weather changes completely, so. But yeah, it's, it's something that, it's a monumental task, and Paulina's the first city. I mean, we, well, first city that really is to this extent. I mean, this year alone, we did a bid project for the city of Sioux Center. We completed a month and probably two weeks in the city of Sheldon, for the city of Sheldon. We've done a week and a half for the city of Sandborne. And yeah, we have, like I said, another four or five communities to go. And all of them are varying amount, you know, on how much they're going to do. But it's been a, kind of a crazy summer, and I don't want to sound arrogant, but I made a huge bet April 1st on a machine, and I think it's, I mean, all right for that, so. But, but yeah. So we just, that's part of the thing of me coming here is just more guidance on how far you guys want to go, and, you know, what exactly you want to do, so.
So then what's the exact proposal? And to stay on and do the rest of the trees for the same price, or what's the exact proposal?
Yeah, so, I mean, we will honor, as long as we're in Paulina, we will honor the price that we gave for this fiscal year. What I would propose to you, if you want to call it proposing, even though I don't know if I'm in the place to do that, I would personally, if I was in your shoes, have a say on, remove all the ash trees, be done. Because like I said, every year that goes by, they're, they're going to become more brittle no matter what. How fast that happens, I don't know. But if you have us back next year for a week, it's higher. You know? And it might be less for productivity because of the quality of the trees left, so.
Well, I think it needs to get done. Have everybody on the same even scale.
Yeah, I mean, like even with our bucket truck, we can, we can cut down trees with the bucket truck, but that's not why the city owns that bucket truck. And if something happens to that bucket truck when, while we're cutting down trees, what happens then when we have an electrical emergency?
And that's the only thing you use, is the bucket truck, right?
For the overhead lines, yeah?
Yep. No, but I mean, even for trees now, isn't that what you're doing?
Oh, yeah, yep.
There's a reason why tree services usually have junking trucks. I buy a truck as cheap as I can get it.
We have a very nice new one, so.
What's, what do we get out of Big Iron?
$35,000, $38, and 80 cents.
Hopefully that will help.
It'll go a long ways. Finish this up. Eight, maybe eight left in the budget should be out, so that would be 43,000.
Yep.
Could you work with that?
What's that?
Could you work with that?
What? I'm sorry, how much?
$43,000.
I don't know if it's going to be done, but, I mean...
Or not, we'll...
We'll start somewhere.
Count 40.
Yep, let Kelly know.
Yeah, I, I think originally, you know, I had Kelly just speculating 75 to 125 total. And I think it will be probably closer to the 75, maybe 85 or so, but again, it's all on how fast, I mean, we can take them down fast, it's just how fast it happens and go, you know? Which, again, all I wanted with this meeting more than anything is to walk out of here going, that guy's an honest guy, and just laying out the facts. He doesn't have to be good, it's, it's just the reality, you know?
I appreciate it. Yes, we do appreciate you coming in and explaining what's going on and...
Yep.
How it's looking and...
No problem, so. Well, we will keep on trucking and go from there, so.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Okay, so discussion to that point. Is there a discussion we have? Talked about budget, what we have had, what we could come up with and found from the sale of previous property. And that puts us at 43 more, and then what else do you want to say?
Do we have to make a motion?
I would make some sort of motion if someone...
At the next time, or do we do it tonight?
I would do it tonight, see if it's telling for sure how far we're getting on.
Okay.
Otherwise, your next one isn't telling for sure.
Yeah, I know, but I didn't know.
We've got a lot of money in that electric fund, though. We have 2 million, so. And we're going to do a bond on that project, aren't we? And that's part of that. These trees are electric too.
I just think it's a no-brainer. I think we have, I think we go up to 43, go from there and see where they're, where they're at.
I mean, I'll tell you straight up, I have half a dozen people come to me daily asking, is my tree going to get down? Is my tree going to get down? I mean, I think, I think we need to be, get everybody on the same playing field and...
Well, and you're going to have enough work just moving all the, all the trees out there, so.
Plus my job that doesn't involve ash board. I mean, we have work without, without, you know, picking down trees and taking care of trees.
So if he was estimating 75 to 85, we would need to come up with at least another 10 beyond the 43 to cover where his, his 75, based on what's been invoiced so far.
He also said 125 though.
He did. So that's why I feel we, we want to make a motion to move the money that you got from your sales to our tree fund at this point. And then see where we're at another week or so, by the next meeting. So you know, we should, does he invoice you constantly, or at the, what does he...
I just got the one from...
That was the one from the airport?
No.
You got one more from...
We just got it late Friday.
Okay.
Looks like it's on our...
Like you said, he, I talked to him about it, he adjusts the days he doesn't have.
I mean, all the days are adjusted, you know?
Yeah, they're adjusted. He just doesn't charge. If he's got guys gone and he doesn't get certain things done, he adjusts.
That's to figure it out. So yeah, that was about a week. He should be able to, two weeks worth and hopefully then by 20th, if he needs, whatever he has left. We can figure out how we can find something for that as well. And get an estimate from him by then. We'll be on that. So we need a motion of some sort.
That was a motion? Well, I'll make a motion, yeah.
She said motion.
Oh, she did. I didn't say motion, did I?
You did make the motion.
Make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we move the dollars from the, what he sold to the tree fund.
How much would that be?
$35,000, $38, and 80 cents.
$35,000, $38, and 80 cents, plus the remainder of what was budgeted, which is approximately $8,000 still to be spent already. And so that, we have another motion by Carol and a second by Jay.
Yes.
All right, is there any other further discussion or questions? Council members, that remains. Okay, let's call it out. All in favor of approving the additional investment in tree removal, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. All ayes, motion carries. Trees coming down.
In the next meeting, I'll have what the guy called, that has the chipper, just to see what he, he's going to come this week and talk to me about it, so.
So for all the dead, all the ones you got hauled out there?
Yep.
Sounds good.
So maybe he can just chip them and haul them away. I don't know how much it'll cost or what he does with the chips or anything yet, so when he comes, I'll figure all that out.
I'll step it home and dump it in the morning.
I think they might haul them for the turkeys, I think they all have to get composted with the, they got the bird food. I'm not sure if that's what he's using it for or what.
So he'll pay you for some of that?
He might.
That'd be nice.
He might.
Okay. Great. Sounds good. Okay, we are back to the order of our, regular order of our agenda. Thank you for your patience, Ken. We'll speak now about employee health insurance.
So on the first page here, kind of talks about on the left side is what we currently have. Benefits match up identical with what it's redoing yet, except for the premium, that's up almost seven and a half percent over what it was last year. So for an individual, went from 1,900 to 2,000 for a premium. Kind of see that. Any questions there?
And that's based on overall from all the people or from our own stats, what we've been using?
Both. So you're a group here, but you're also in other, with other groups. So it's based on both. Probably the main factor is our group, and that kind of tells us that on the next page here. The biggest factor that went up was our risk level, and that was 5% of that 7. So if you go to the third page, the next page, that'll kind of tell you why. Our claims have about doubled from what they were last year. And the big claims of ten thousand or more, there's a much more frequency there and a lot, a lot larger. So, I mean, that's almost, almost triple there, so. So, something's happened there and so they rated for that, so. The next page is just who's on it, where that premium is derived from. And then on the following page, which has the highlighted mark, that's where we're at today, so that's why I highlighted it. As you can see, there's a lot more expensive policies, there's a lot more cheaper policies if you want to do something like that, so. The highlighted is where we are right now. I didn't know what your thoughts were, we have changed that in the past, we have taken some increases over the last few years.
Remember we had a thousand, two thousand a couple of years ago?
Couple of years ago, yep.
Yep, and then went to two, four.
Yep, yep. And the next several pages are other options as well. So there's all, all kinds of things, so. I haven't gotten any complaints about coverage, is that, would you say that's true as well? Michelle, okay. I mean, obviously it's good company, I think the coverage is good. The deductible we've raised it, I, I think it's reasonable for a group, especially a city.
I'm kind of amazed with the double or, like you said, tripling of benefit or what we use, claims, that would go and went up to seven.
I would agree, so what they're looking at, there must have been something there, but it must have either been a little more short-term they're hoping, it certainly would not be long-term for that little bit increase.
Yeah, is that just kind of amazing?
Yeah.
But I'm happy.
I would agree, yes.
Because I'm seeing all these twelves and thirties.
Yes, I would agree, yep. Any questions?
I can speak for the guys outside, I mean, we're, we're all very appreciative of the insurance we have, everybody is, they don't take it for granted, they appreciate it.
Well, I don't think you can beat all Mark.
Right.
We've been with them for years, years too, so. It's a good company. Let's see, renewal is, goes the first, what's the deadline for?
If you want to make any changes, need to do it by December fifteenth. Yep, that's when they need approval.
And would you say, I don't know how many other places you work with this kind of employees, but would you say the two and four is about average or is that very low?
I'd say it's a little low, which is kind of a general rule of thumb for government employees, tend to have a little better benefits than the general public, yep.
Well, maybe we should discuss it and think about it a little bit, otherwise it shouldn't take a whole lot to decide.
See, we have a lot of single, single policies, so there are only two family policies there. So that, that really helps, huh?
Okay, if anybody thinks any other questions after tonight, can't we welcome those?
Yep, thank you.
Thanks, Ken.
Thanks, Ken.
All right, next up is the Changers Hometown Christmas.
Well, it's that time again where we are cleaning our hometown Christmas. So we just wanted to come to the city, as we normally do every year, for approvals. Let me see, I think the street closures are the next one, yes, they are. So this year, we're going to be doing the same thing, we're gonna be doing a parade that's gonna be down, down Main Street. One thing that we're wanting to see if the city would be okay with, if we can use the old bank for kind of a more central location for different, different things that we're wanting to plan. I'm not for sure if there's any plans for the bank right now, or, you know, if you're even wanting anybody to come in there. We are, if you guys are okay with that, we can look into additional liability coverage. On our behalf, it doesn't really add too much to our policy. And we can also take extra measures as far as posting for not having any liabilities for the, the city. I know we've done that for other outside events that, that we have done. Another thing would be, a few years ago, probably three, four years ago, we ended up having a large round bale at the Pocket Park, and we decorated that. I don't know if it, we're kind of asking if that would be something that we could do again with some, some guidelines with that, when we would be taking it down. It would be probably the, the first part of December is when we would like to have that there and decorated. And then after the first of the year, shortly after, I should say, we would pick it up and dispose of that. It was something that was kind of an added fun feature to, to the Pocket Park. And I know we kind of kept it there a little bit longer than expected last time, but if we have a timeframe that we need to get it out of there, you know, we will definitely abide by that. Also, if there's anything that happens to the grass underneath, you know, we will take responsibility of putting some grass seed in and whatnot that is needed. We also would like to have a tree again at the Pocket Park. Carol has a tree on her property that she would like to be taken down. We've taken a look at that and it's, it's a perfect size, it's not the big tree that we had last year that was quite, quite large, too large for, for what we should be doing and decorating. So if we can have permission for that, and is that the tree that you were talking about?
The one right next to that one?
Yes, yep, yep, is that the one that you're talking about, West Wayback that they're going to be taking down?
He's trimming a tree in mine.
Okay, okay.
Nope.
All right.
He's trimming a tree in the yard.
Okay, perfect. Also, when we can start decorating, we usually decorate the Boulevard with lights and just downtown and, and everything else. Probably would like to decorate that here soon, just because the weather is up and down. We would like to do it when it's fairly, fairly warm, because it's, there's been a couple of years where it's been cool, because we do it at night, so we can make sure that our lights actually work. So we don't have the daylight and the, the warmth there. We are also going to be asking for the businesses uptown to kind of partake in our hometown Christmas as far as decorating and we're going to see if they could decorate their, their storefronts and maybe a little bit outside. Of course, you know, with there being guidelines as well, not being, you know, too far out, I guess I'm not for sure what, what your guys' guidelines are for how far you can go outside of your business.
Three feet.
Three feet?
Three feet.
Okay, so if that is something that we can, if they are wanting to decorate outside, if that would be a possibility, and we will, you know, make sure that is in the letter to them, that they can only go three feet outside. We just would like to add a little bit more decorating for downtown.
Is there anything else, Scott?
No.
If you guys have suggestions or anything like that too, we always love to hear ideas.
Are you still doing the parade?
Yes, I did say that, yep. The parade will go down Main Street again.
When is it gonna be?
It's gonna be the first Saturday of December, so I think it's the second, yes, the second, yep. And again, the bank is just something that we kind of thought it was, it was empty, a nice location, more space to kind of have, have Santa in there, because there, I mean, it's cold in December. And the long lines, and I know that's kind of part of hometown Christmas, we've done that for how many years prior? It's just kind of something that you're out, out in the cold, it's expected. But if there is a, an opportunity to use that, again, with those, those extra, you know, what we, what we can also add to it as far as the extra insurance and whatnot, that would be.
We're limited on what windows, I mean, we don't have windows.
We don't have the storefronts.
We don't have like what we used to, so we just thought a different idea of maybe we can decorate inside there and make it cute like a.
That'd have plenty of room, I mean, we'd make it really, some little offices too, that would work.
Right.
Yeah, you could do things around and just do that main front area.
They got the whole big wooden window, they got the whole.
Right. And you wouldn't have to worry out for kids in there, you know, because you have no idea what it's gonna be.
Yeah, and we will still have stuff outside too, you know, we'll have outside games and outside things to do, but no more maybe of a, a warming location as well.
For Mr. and Mrs. Ross.
I mean, people of all ages.
Yeah, oh, I think that's good.
Fire department still doing the chili?
I contacted them, I haven't heard anything back yet.
I talked to Ryan, I think we're, I think it's.
Okay.
Then you do it in here?
Mm-hmm.
Like you did last time, an elf breakfast.
Yep, we will have the breakfast with the elves again here in the morning. That's gonna be nine to eleven, we kind of push it back a little bit. That's always a fun, a fun event for, for kids and parents, grandparents.
Nine to eleven?
Yes.
And then when, when will you have your other start, did you say?
Five o'clock is when hometown Christmas is going to start. I guess, can I, I guess we probably need to, to vote on some of this stuff before I go to the street closures?
No, there's no other action item at this time, other than the street closures.
Okay, so with the street closures, which is the next line item, we would like to have that closed by three o'clock, if that is, if that's okay, just so we can make sure that the, that the cars and, and vehicles are not downtown, so. It does, yeah.
That one's wrong, it's outdated, it's like, it was partially updated, left them on by that one. I see, I did a terrible job editing that. It is December second, twenty twenty-three, and obviously for the day of hometown Christmas.
As far as garbage cans, is that just something you want us to put out Friday and you guys will set them up?
Same as what we've done in the past, yeah, I think that works fine. And if you're fine with us moving that and taking them down and putting them where, where you have them.
And you need garbage cans again too and all that good stuff?
We do have garbage cans, yeah, that we can, that we can put out.
Yeah, we don't use as many garbage cans for this event.
No.
Yeah, because it's not quite as.
Yeah, so then you're talking luminaries too, isn't it?
We are.
That's gonna be pretty.
Yep. And we haven't put anything out there yet, because we just wanted to make sure that we got approval from the city before we advertise.
And you will let the businesses know that we're gonna block off Main Street?
Yep, yeah, from three o'clock. And I think Katie, I think she closes at two, her boutique, which I know usually for hometown Christmas, we, we're good there, usually Fall Festival, where she, she's still open, but she also benefits from, from butt chondra there.
So we just need to make a motion on the closing of the streets?
Right, the official resolution, yeah, the next item. Any other questions about the other things, or any concerns about using the old bank or?
Do you have to give the real plan of the bank to make a move? Do you have to have a proposal written up on that?
No, not just a motion.
And are you wanting us to get that extra, like, look into that? No, we don't really need it for outside events, but I don't know, I mean, with it being an inside, in a, in the old bank, if that is going to be needed.
I think that's a great idea.
Check into it.
Check into it, see how, looking at it.
Yeah, he's got the keys, I don't know if the girl too, too, but you can get them and take a look.
And then as far as the bail, if, if you guys are okay with that, when would you like us to have that removed?
It's gonna be cold when it's frozen.
It's not gonna hurt, it's not gonna hurt.
If it's froze, it's all gonna be froze anyhow. So have it decorated, so it'll go all winter.
We'll do it for Easter, right?
So, so the Christmas tree's going in the park then?
Yeah.
We're not putting one in the middle?
That would be amazing if we could do that, that would be.
Kelly, Kelly, come on.
Kelly, come on, Kelly, come on, Kelly.
So it falls in on something struck.
That would be our goal, is to have it in the middle of the street again, but I understand, but it, it's tough to do that with.
This one isn't quite as big though.
No, it's, it's very, it looks really good, thank you.
It's not that I did anything for it. But I need it moved from my building, so. It got too big.
And then just decorating downtown, the Boulevard and all, if we could. We'll do it anytime, honestly, if we could start just whatever our schedule is.
When do you start putting stuff on?
We usually put Christmas lights up after Thanksgiving.
And we do, we decorated, or we put lights up before Thanksgiving, we just didn't turn them on yet.
Right, I think that's good.
I think it's okay.
Yeah, do it after, I mean, right, day after or whatever you want to do, but.
Yeah, they're beautiful. Nearly the month of January, wasn't it, for sure?
Uh, was it?
At least it might have been.
It was a little bit later.
February, well, because it's hard, snow is piled up there and it's frozen and so.
Last winter was tough.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was winter, yep.
I think it was April, we had that last one out.
And it wasn't Easter.
Oh, I think that all sounds good.
Sounds great.
Perfect.
Thank you much.
Do the resolution of this?
Yeah, resolution, just with the correction of it's made legally with an Y at the end there, excuse that, and December second, twenty twenty-three. For purposes, but if someone would like to read the be it resolved part as their.
Well. Be it resolved by the Council of the City of Cleveland, Iowa to approve closing Main Street from south of City Hall, north to River Street and East Broadway Street from Main to Midley at three P M. on Saturday, December second, twenty twenty-three for hometown Christmas.
Well, that's, she's introduced the resolution.
I'll second it.
Jay seconded. All vote. Steve Herron?
Aye.
Carol Longcomb?
Aye.
Jean Unruh?
Aye.
Lexi Murphy? Jay Jones?
Aye.
Okay, so one absent and four ayes means motion passed. Okay, a permy application for gray markets class B retail alcohol license, I have twelve on the agenda. I'll make a motion to approve the application for permy market class B retail alcohol license.
Second.
All right, Jean's made a motion, and she has seconded for approval of gray markets class B retail alcohol license. Does he have any other discussion on that? Here now, I'll call for a vote, well, actually, all in favor, yeah, all in favor of approving the application, say aye.
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 And opposed, say nay. All ayes, motion carries, and same effect there, the approval of renewal of the J and D Tavern's class C retail alcohol license.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Carol, second by Steve. Any other discussion related to this item? All in favor of approving the renewal of J and D Tavern's class C retail alcohol license, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. All ayes, motion carries. Mark, thank you for your patience.
Good evening, my name's Mark, Mark Wilson, I'm the director for Bryant County Conservation. And I'm here on behalf of the county, because we would like to connect Mill Creek Park to the City of Paulina's wastewater system. to the city of Palina's wastewater system. So I think saying it's preliminary design, um, that's what we have. I think you have that in your packet.
Yeah, we've got a color in hand actually so you can see the difference there.
I have a prettier one.
Nice.
I put my printer for my color in.
So, yep, we hired a DGR engineering, um, who I think you guys have worked with in the past as well. Um, but, uh, yeah, so that's kind of the, the idea there is to connect all of our existing leach, leach fields and septic systems into the, uh, into the wastewater system with city of Palina. Uh, about 10 years ago, somebody had the foresight, uh, to put a sewer line under the highway uh, into the, into the park. That's just to the north, um, of the ditch there, right between the John Deere dealership and the lodge. Um, so that's where the design calls for the flow meter. Um, and then so everything from the park would then funnel to that. So this is to be a low pressure system. We're going to have to put in a bunch of grinder pumps and things like that in order to make it happen. So it'll be a low pressure system. Um, this initial, well, no, this, the design you have there is to connect the shop office, the lodge, a new full all-season bathroom. Uh, that's going to be where the fish cleaning shack is there at the park. Uh, the goal is to have a heated all-season bathroom available to the public there. Um, as well as the fish cleaning shack. But then, uh, and then we extend over into the main part of the park to the concession stand snack shack. Um, and then as part of this same project, we then to connect the, the old shower house and the dump station. So that, that'd be this project, uh, depending on bids and quotes and whatnot and funding available. Uh, of course, we'd love to connect, uh, both campgrounds, each individual site. There's 48 sites, um, as well as all four cabins, which only two of them currently have bathrooms. But we'd be, at least be able to in the future connect the two small ones as well if we want to add bathrooms.
So you won't have the actual campers, won't have a sewer system under them like they?
Not with this design right here.
At this?
That would be part of, this will allow us to connect, do that in the future. Or that may be nearer in the future than far depending on.
So they just have to have holding tank then and they'll dump it someplace or what?
Our dump station next to the old shower house would still be.
Still be using it.
But that would be connected, the dump station would be connected to the sewer.
Okay. And then you got all those, I talked to the guy that we used to camp at and he said, they work with Milford. And he said it's worked out great to go with the city like that. And they've got just about 300 sites.
Yeah.
So.
So, yeah, it's a significant investment and before the county lots any money, um, just wanted to make sure that we had an official resolution, um, from, from you guys here at the city to allow us to move forward. Um, then once it all, that all starts progressing, we'd obviously have to create a wastewater agreement. Um, the kind of details that all out, I believe, um, knew at this as well. Um, but, uh, that'd be, that'd be the more lengthy legal document, I guess.
Yeah, because how you're going to figure out how much you're going to pay the city?
That would be part of that.
Floor meter.
From that floor meter, yep.
And how many, how many grinders are you putting in? Just the one by the, the station then?
Uh, on the map, this current project, I think we have six.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, just the landscape there and everything, there's not going to be too much gravity.
Is that what you're calling a simplex?
Yes.
Grinder, okay.
Okay.
That's good.
Yep, you got a few of them. And help this start at this.
Sorry? Uh, yeah, we, I don't know. Yeah, we got a few other projects going on, uh, but this would be mostly contracted out. Um, so it'd be on their availability. Um, and we'd be able to work in the most, do a lot of this work outside of the campground. Uh, so we wouldn't have to, you know, impact the campground or close it. So we should be able to do a lot of it throughout the summer. It's timeline that we'll have to figure out.
So at this point, yeah, we do not have an official formal, a lot of the additional agreements passed on to us were related to, if you need testing and sampling and D and R relation, related tasks that way. And this doesn't, and our commercial customers still, um, agreement and existing ordinances would still all apply. So at this point, I feel like, yeah, the other than having council say yes, add you as a commercial customer, I don't think we need anything more legal.
Oh.
And we did have, I did a draft of resolution, if you want it to be an official resolution versus just in minutes. We can do that. It just basically says, uh, to approve the addition of Mill Creek Park uh, through O'Brien County Conservation as a commercial customer for existing ordinances such as chapter two sanitary sewer systems, article four, public sewer systems with associated fees, agreement subject to review by both parties two years after the date of this resolution. So we can do that if you would rather have a resolution. It's really.
That sounds great.
If you'd rather do this, okay? We should do a resolution. Jenny, you have a question related to our resolution?
Not to the resolution, but the overall project, just wondering Kelly where the tie-in will be.
It's already, we, we aren't going to have to do anything when we did John Deere.
Yep.
We put a pipe underneath the highway and it's sitting there waiting for them. So there's basically nothing we're going to have to do. The city's going to have to do it.
Okay.
It's all beyond them.
Have any type of surveys been done as far as flow and capacity?
For the lagoons?
Well, even in the, the sanitary sewer pipe that's in there, is that going to be an issue or?
When, when they did John Deere, they put that pipe across the road.
Right.
Expecting them to do what they're doing. We just did it as, you know, we figured at some point they'd want to and we had the equipment and one out there. So, and it didn't cost us that much at that time, just to throw a pipe under the road.
What about future expansion then that they're talking about?
Need more samplers or whatever?
Well, when they're going to continue to tie in different things there in the park is, is that line going to be big enough, I guess, is a concern for, for me.
Do you have a, anything from DGR on flow and capacity or anything like that yet?
No, this is all preliminary design. Um, it's tied pretty close to the, if our entire park is on city of Palina water and our peak flow this summer was 61,000 gallons.
Yeah, so that's not that crazy compared to what?
And that was for one billing cycle. There's quite less throughout the rest of those.
Because I do like four or five thousand gallons a month in my house.
Right, we're talking commercial.
Yeah.
Only summer, two months you want.
How big was that line? Did it put in by six or four?
It's six or eight.
Yeah, it's a good line.
Well, the guy from up at the lake said that you should start from three and a half in the pipe to six inches and it runs into a 12-inch sewer hookups for the city sewer.
Uh, I can relay that. It's the same engine firm that put in that pipe, um, with this expansion on the highway. And I think it's actually the same engineer, so.
So what is the pipe going to the lagoons? I'd have to check. I'm not sure off the top of my head.
Oh, I think it is. No, he said 12-inch.
Concerned about the future and having to.
Well, if anything happens on that pipe, that's the only pipe that's going to get, that's going to have problems.
So if we need more capacity, you'd have to install another pipe then.
Good place.
Well, I don't think that, I don't, I don't think they're going to have a problem because John Deere doesn't even have too much sewer. And they're not going to flow through John Deere. It's going to be hooked in like a Y, so.
No, I understand that.
Yeah. Well, I understand what you're saying, but if they, if you got a six inch line, you can't tell me that that's not going to be big enough for. Because I, I put septics in and they got smaller lines than that and I'm.
Just looking to the future.
Right, you don't want to be changing if you don't have to.
Because it sounds like you got quite a project that you want to do as time goes forward.
Eventually.
Yeah, I mean, I think the, having all 48 sites and the cabins hooked up would be a huge bonus to the park and to the people using it. Having a modern system, some of these septic tanks are 50 plus years old. So we're going to have to replace them or do this.
But even with this, we're still going to have the same amount of sewer going because it's all going to go to the dump station before they leave.
Yeah. Typically, almost every camper comes.
Oh, so instead of coming.
But that's still going to be hooked to the system, right?
What's that?
The dump station.
Right, but the growth will just divide that away from the dump station to the sites and spread.
It will be.
Instead of it coming out, out of the camper and going into the sewer, it's just going to, everybody's going to go to the dump station. So it's not going to be, I mean, once you get this part of it done for the most part, that's, that's what you're going to get.
Yeah, until, until the next expansion, then they'll be the camp sites.
We don't know, too many campers that leave with a camper full of crap that you can dump.
Now they'll be really happy. We're not going to have that Christmas vacation seeing our family. Fireball.
Because Eddie?
Eddie, there you go. So we don't need any kind of resolution or?
No, I think you would prefer to have that resolution then read. So I did read it if one of you would read it as well and then it's the introduction. We'll make it a little more formal then. It's voluntary.
About to start cheating.
I already read one. Just the be it resolved.
Be it resolved, okay. Be it resolved by the council of the city of Palina, Iowa to approve the addition of Mill Creek Park through O'Brien County Conservation as a commercial customer for existing ordinances such as chapter two sanitary sewer systems, article four, public sewer systems with associated fees. Agreement subject to review by both parties two years after the date of this resolution.
I'll second that.
All right, Carol's introduced a resolution. Jay has provided support. Does anyone else have any other questions related to this? Resolution? All right, call for roll call votes. Steve Herring?
Aye.
Carol Longcom?
Aye.
Jean Unrow?
Aye.
Jay Jones?
Aye.
Lexi, absent.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, the approval of the 36-month contract with A and M Laundry. This is the regular rug and shop towel service that I think you've been using for years if not.
It's been a year.
So what is a year?
Three-year contract.
Do we have that on here?
I don't see. It's in there monthly.
This crazy right here.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got the page, but what do we pay? I just see delivery charge.
Oh, it breaks it down so that like your mats and.
Oh, whatever you have done.
Yeah. If you look at our account.
So what's an average month?
Um, it's about 65 every two weeks.
Really? They've been around forever.
And they kept the price the same.
Did they? Okay, and we're doing a what, three-year?
Three-year.
Is that what's been done in the past, this three years or?
Could say that. Look at this, copy this again. It's got everything itemized out.
If it's, if, if you, they can't raise rates in three years.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
I do too. We have that length of a time.
Does it say that in the year? Or is it a small print? I can't read that.
I think you said it on that.
It says no modification or assignment of agreement shall be effective unless in writing and signed by both parties.
Have you been happy with this?
Yeah, they must do what everybody, because it says right here. The initial term of agreement is 36 months. I move that we approve the 36-month contract with A and M Laundry.
I'll second. Okay, Jean, I make a motion. And then Jean seconded that motion to approve the 36-month contract renewal with A and M Laundry. Do we have further discussion or questions related to this contract or the service it provides? A and M will call for a vote on favor of approving the 36-month contract renewal with A and M Laundry, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. All ayes, motion carries, contract approved. Uh, the next one is NBIT Solutions Monthly Managed IT Proposal with the equipment required to do so. This was emailed to, I believe. I'll be able to print copy if you need to reference one. Uh, this person came in to speak to these two and present.
Jean was in as well, right?
Email. Oh, okay. Jean, you were in on the initial meeting?
Yes, I was.
Proposal, if you wanted to speak to that a little bit.
Very good. I was impressed with the guy. One thing is they're based out of Sioux Falls and he said that they monitor our situation 24 hours. Not just if something happens, but continually. And it's that much closer and they can come down physically if we need them here. I was impressed with that too.
And did they come monthly? I, I just remember Carol having them in front of her and I knew, I thought she said monthly. I don't know.
I don't think, you don't know? I don't think that was in the contract, but.
Okay.
They are too.
And I definitely were readily available to BC3. And where is that?
I don't know.
I think in California.
Is that the one we're paid for right now?
Yes. What are we paying there per month?
Um.
Like five?
Almost 500.
Five hundred.
And what's this one, seven, was it?
Well, that's. This has additional, this includes the Microsoft Office real subscriptions that we all computers should have instead of the version that currently is in place. And it also has managed email, cybersecurity and training for phishing and other concerns related to security threats within municipalities.
Can we break their contract then or what's it do?
BC3, I'm not buying a contract.
Okay, we're not, we'll just pay them monthly for you. Okay.
You know, I do remember that the guy said, our internet coming into, coming to the building is great. It's inside the building that we have the problem with the networking of our computers. It's slow.
Yes, they've been struggling with that. This is good, so.
And that other company would have a firewall and all that set up for us too?
They do.
Okay. So. That one, we did that a couple of years ago. Do you all have any idea what one was set up? I remember talking about it, but I don't remember either. I want to know.
No, it says MANDIT proposal with equipment. What are they talking about?
So that's that next little bit where it shows you the pieces of equipment they are looking to install to make sure the system is fully functional and not struggling to keep up as it is currently. It's not the council chamber. It's on that same page. Do you have MANDIT or who has it on page? Do you know what page it is? It says the meeting hardware parts. I sent it to you in an email.
I want on page three. Are we looking at page three? Is that what you're talking about, the $500?
Infrastructure and stuff like that. Auto boy services. Email services.
That's the one-time part.
And the email security. Oh, that's all part of the additional, yeah.
So what do we have right now for an operating system then? Nothing or is, it isn't, it isn't Microsoft-based or?
Well, it's Microsoft-based, but TCA's not properly.
Yeah.
And that's with the mainframe, right?
Yeah, because right now we can't use, um, we can't even open our emails without them. We have to go through the TCA website.
And they can't figure that out either.
They say it's an outlook issue, so. It's made some qualified too, actually. Love repairing them. Issues. And get it toward, because they should not be questioning that. It's DNA and else or activity online.
That's fine, we're always happy with these people. I was always happy with these people. I don't know what she all had, had them do, but I know she, I thought she remembered, she told me monthly they came in and she was very happy with them. So.
They just have the more locally based versus.
Oh, two, because they're close. So the monthly charge looks like seven fifty basically. To five hundred, is that the setup maybe?
Five hundred is the implementation and configuration.
So that'd be putting it in.
The one-time?
That's a one-time.
One-time, thank you. And then the seven forty-nine is the monthly amount.
And then your hardware, then your hardware, that's that two thousand six hundred and eighty-four.
Yeah, and that's when they.
So it'd be like three K probably approximately is the upfront cost. And I could ask Primark what all they get for their contract.
Yeah, because theirs is what was considerably lower than this. I thought that was too. I'd like to know what the difference, what they didn't get or what we're looking at, because we were looking at a TV and all this stuff too.
Well, that's separate, but that's, they also, I think they might not have had their email managed or their Microsoft Office subscription as part of it, it's not yet.
I will say as far as the TV, a lot of times we go down to the fire station for safety meetings just because of the simple fact they have a TV down there. But when we have, when the office I used to have to be involved, then we have it up here, then she has to get out her projector, which we're the only town that we have, she has to get a projector out at, so.
So you're saying this will be a nice idea to have in here.
Yeah, except for that one that, you know, when we agreed to do the CAPS program. Is that?
That is right here.
Is that sane or?
Well, yes, this is, this is the exact size of that.
I think that was my house.
This is basically, it's here because they're taking off some walls there protecting it for the, it's over here, but I brought, so this is exhibit A, this is exactly the size of what, um, what the proposal came in at to ask to add that. And so that would allow, yes, to have presentations and show content, um, but also then the rest of the system is to wire it appropriately and not have the rigged system we currently have, which is, you know, sideways computer tied to a really old thing tied to that. It would actually be a conference meeting room set up with proper sound, but that's the next step, that is separate from this, but. But yes, the CAPS program, it still is given and whatever to allow room or to be used for this.
So we can move it back and forth. So that was the.
So that takes that out of that bit annoying, but he has his other setup.
Yeah, we just do the wiring and stuff or whatever. Well, maybe we should check, I mean. Do you want to wait till the next meeting and then you check what Primark found and send us a note? So we kind of know and go from there and make sure we're happy with everything we're looking at.
Would it be wise to contact some other towns?
See if anybody will use them. That'd be a good idea too.
Probably wouldn't hurt. Then it's, I know it's not a big amount, but if you guys got room in your budget for something like this or?
Well, we gotta get it done because their computers aren't working right, so.
Yeah, we gotta get something done.
They're locked up half a day and they can't get stuff.
Every day, half a day?
Yeah, yeah, Denny. Jesus, that's amazing.
And they go to coffee break and?
We go to coffee break and then they go down.
Alex's computer is much worse than mine. It'll take five minutes for hers to do a backup or it takes twelve seconds for mine.
Is it, are they that one, that much older or?
I don't know. Part of the issue is hers is set up as a workstation that bounces offline.
Well, definitely you look into, so you see what you can find out.
Fully inefficiently, not just.
Yes, so we can make everything work.
You guys can see what some of the other cities have, if they have this or something else.
Yeah, beans are halfway close, I would think, maybe, but I don't know.
And let us look into what we have budgeted for, you know, office equipment.
Yep. Yep.
We're definitely going to revise that court too and move. Terms not yet.
As long as, I never even thought of that part, that is a very expensive. But as long as they're letting us have that, that's, it'd be a nice plus. So, yeah, and then that would help on that.
Okay, so that pertains to items seventeen and eighteen. I'm hearing that you are asking to?
More information on that.
More information, whatever you can find.
And go from there and hopefully send back on November twentieth. Yep. And I would hope that he would be okay on all of this.
He probably had come on too, I didn't think to ask that, I'm sure he would answer questions and. Okay. So moving on to item nineteen, is amend ordinance seven point oh three planning restrictions to allow planting of trees in the parking per permit and restrictions. The second reading is this evening. First reading was done at the last meeting for both nineteen and twenty.
I heard that people are already planting trees. What are we doing about that?
What are we doing with that?
I'll do what you tell me to do. That's a ordinance thing and that's.
To the west, it's still, right now it's a no planting ordinance. Until final reading and publication.
Which won't be till about the middle of November, right?
If we buy them, it's a good reading.
Right.
If you waive the third reading.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a good reading.
Do you have any comments on it or any complaint?
No, the situation. No, and as you hear from the cost of removing them going forward. We know now what problem it can be and we've heard from, like I said, Sheldon, has more and other cities are putting in no planting outlawing it. There was a nice article about the right of way in our latest League Cities letter, newsletter as well, if you guys wanted to read that, I can give copies for you, but. Talk about the importance of the right of way and maintaining its integrity and watching what goes in there and having some control over it is the best, so. That the ordinance requires that the owner maintain it and care for it, but it's really not technically their property, which is hard for people to understand, but it's.
And they don't have to remove it, I mean, you know, we talked about that and the options, but we are not, we can't do that anyhow.
It's all up to.
Go back to the city, I think.
If it is dead or diseased, it is our responsibility to remove.
Yep.
Okay, I don't know if we had, someone needs to introduce, if that is what you're going to do for the second reading. To then, item nineteen? Or if you are choosing to stop the process right now. That is your decision.
I'd like a motion to approve the second reading.
I'll second. Second reading, not waving the third. All right, so we've had a motion by Steve and a second by Jeanne. To consider this the second reading to amend ordinance seven point oh three planning restrictions to allow planting trees in the parking per permit and restrictions. Do we have any other further discussion related to?
So we're not, we're going to go with the third reading yet too?
Yeah, I just approved the second reading.
But we can cancel the third at this point too, can't we?
Well, my motion.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to recheck.
We have a motion on the table to just consider this the second, which would require a third reading on November twentieth, followed by publication, followed by a December approval.
Then they can't plant.
Which is essentially what we're saying.
Longer time.
So is everyone clear on the motion and second on the table? Then we will call for a vote, roll call vote. Steve Haren?
Aye.
Carol Loncomb?
Nay.
Jay Jones?
Nay.
Jeanne Enrow?
Nay.
Okay, that was three names.
Is that legal?
Yeah, yes. As his breasts are over there.
It's interesting. Okay, so that was the denial of a second reading. So at this point, the ordinance then would stall, would be canceled out unless there's a further amendment, a further motion prior to moving on in the agenda.
Well, I'm going to try to do a different motion. I'm going to make a motion to approve the second reading and disregard, or however you say.
Waive.
Waive, that's a good word, waive the third reading.
I'll second that.
Planting of the trees. Planting of the restrictions to the trees.
Okay, we've heard Carol make the motion and Jay make a second to amend ordinance seven point oh three planning restrictions to allow planting trees in the parking permit, per permit and restrictions as the second and waiving the third reading. Do we have any other discussion on this motion on the table? Okay, then we can call for a roll call vote. Steve Haren?
Nay.
Carol Loncomb?
Aye.
Jeanne Enrow?
Aye.
Jay Jones?
Aye.
Three ayes, one nay, one absent.
So what would that put it to for date?
It'll be published, that has to be published, yes. So if you get the minutes out on Friday, they won't be published, there will follow, there's an interview about the. So just the date, Thursday, Wednesday the fifteenth or Thursday the sixteenth would be.
Sixteenth of November.
And on to the item twenty then, ordinance number ten, amended ordinance ten to remove permits and fees for golf carts. This again was the discussion as in. There is currently a state code that requires certain things already of golf cart operation on our city streets. And it is up to us whether we want to have fees or not, and the decision at currently is to stop charging for operators of golf carts. And simply follow the existing Iowa code as for that. So this is where we are, the second reading for this evening, or second waiving the third and calling it complete upon publication.
Go ahead, Carol.
Go ahead. Um, I do want to say before I make the motion that, um, we checked into the section and I talked to Kent Foust too, and anybody that does drive on city streets, and it will say it in there too, if you look at the Iowa code, that they do need insurance on their golf carts. I'm hoping people realize that.
Now with this, what we're doing here, we're just taking the fees away, but they still have to have the safety.
Well, they still have to.
Still exists from that code, which is.
Does Iowa code say anything about headlights or taillights?
Uh, yes, well adequate brakes and shall meet any other safety, it has to have a slow-moving sign and bicycle operating flag and operate on streets only from sunrise to sunset. So it does.
And it's that stays, it's just, it's just the fee that we're taking.
Right, so we're just saying we'll go with what the state has, which is, covers everything we had really except for the fees in there.
And I just didn't realize that they had to have insurance until I found out that that's what that code means. I mean, it's got that listed in there.
Now, I've seen people with these golf carts driving around that holds like five, six people. Do, do kids have to be in child seats too then?
I don't think it says that.
Just off the top of my head, if, if it doesn't come equipped with seat belts.
Says the operators have to have a valid driver's license, so hopefully kids aren't driving. Unless they're at least sixteen.
Well, I move that we amend ordinance number ten to remove permits, fees for golf carts and waive the third reading.
I'll second that. Jay has made the motion to amend ordinance number ten, remove permits and fees for golf carts, the second reading to waive the third, and Carol has supported that motion. Do we have further discussion related to the golf cart ordinance number ten amendment? Okay, then we can call a roll call vote. Steve Haren?
Aye.
Carol Loncomb?
Aye.
Jeanne Enrow?
Aye.
Jay Jones?
Aye.
It's all ayes with absent Lexi. So that is considered passed as of this evening, pending publication. We've already done item twenty-one, how exciting is that? And we are on to courts. Courts, okay, and for my part, I just wanted to mention that we do have a budget. It has been in existence, people who did not know where it is or where to find it. So it's been on the state website since it was approved and sent through to the county, and it's also on our website, has been since it's in existence. So citypalina.com, if you look under there, there's, I'll put a link to it or whatever when you put one on, but it is there. And for you to review, you can actually review any town you would like in full detail, all the pages of it, you can print them, you can highlight them, you can bring suggestions forward for the next one. But that does exist and has this whole time. Um, we also have an interim treasurer that misinformation has apparently been reported falsely, so for those of you on that, there's that. Um, and tomorrow across the hall, we hope that many of you will rise forth and do your civic duty with an educated, properly decision in who you choose to have an impact in our town going forward, because it is vitally important to the success of this town, which is important to me and I know is important to many of you as well. And so hopefully that will occur. Okay, enough from me, and we'll go on to Kelly.
We've been working on streetlights, we've got two blocks of wires pulled in downtown. We've got a few of them up yet, we have. Probably six. Seven blocks we have to pull in wire yet, which is, we're trying to get wire through old pipes, so it's not always the most fun. We started today grinding, or picking up, sucking up the grind, grinding from the stumps. I think we got eight of them done or so. We got the water hooked up at the new house on Wood Street. And yeah, this week we plan on keeping up on the stump grindings and starting on the electric downtown again.
Is that what part of the issue is with it down here, that there's an issue, I know you said there was a problem with it? With the lights up there?
The light down there, it's got, I, I'm, we're gonna have to do some digging over there to get that one working, because I tried everything under the sun of the. So there must be something wrong with the wire underneath the ground that we're gonna have to dig up.
Oh, yes. Um, Alex and I have decided it'd be a good idea if we handed out new resident packets when they come in for services. We're not very welcoming, you know, they, people have a lot of questions and they're not getting answered, and it'd be nice to hand out a packet with information and maybe get with the chamber and see if maybe we can put things in there to promote our, our downtown businesses. Just throw it out there, huh? Something, yeah, chamber bucks or something.
Might be nicer, you do. No, I think that's a good idea.
And to go with that, if I didn't work here, I'd have no idea of a lot of stuff, so I think the packets are a good idea.
Yeah, good idea.
Make sure you tell them about our webpage too though.
Yes, yeah.
Because it's, it's got a lot of good information on the new one.
I guess we'll continue chugging on. Yes, yes. The progress, I mean, you guys can't see it, but it's, we've made a lot of progress. It's, it is a, it was, it was a disaster.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you for all your diligent work.
You're welcome.
And we didn't get anything from the state that said we were doing anything illegal or anything like that, like everything.
Well, they didn't shut us out.
A big conspiracy theory that we're doing anything illegal.
We have no money, honey.
Yeah, we, we don't have any money, we don't, we don't know where it's going and all that, so. I got ahold of Northern Natural on the dirt situation on, and I couldn't, the company wouldn't respond back to me, the, the original company that did the contracting in Manhattan. So I got ahold of Northern Natural guys and they, Kelly went out and raided the dirt down and they seen it, so.
It looked very nice, threw down a bunch of, yeah, cut down stuff that we had and found it very good.
So Northern Natural did it right away, they, they didn't mess around, so. They, they didn't mess around, so...
That's good follow-up on that.
Thank you.
Forget Nate, do you have something more? Nothing to report? Okay, we don't have the others here tonight. So any other committee reports? Otherwise, council comments, staff, or anyone else?
I noticed in the paper, um, this is my comment, that on the November second paper from the sixteenth of October, um, council meeting, that I was quoted saying a couple of things that didn't sound quite right. So I re-listened to the whole meeting the other day. And it said that I had said that John Han's place was a mess, which I said I had gone past it and it looked much better than it had before, because then it had been a mess. So it was kind of just taken out of context, I think. And then on the golf cart thing, ordinance, um, it said that I said that we could take money or get money for SUVs and ATVs. And I never said that either. I said we could get it from golf carts only. And, um, so I just kind of wanted to bring it up. I guess those things happen, but I wasn't, when I read the paper, I thought, I don't remember saying those things. So I thought I would bring it up.
Okay, and another thing I forgot is the Board of Trustees for the library is meeting November ninth, which is Wednesday, I believe, on. Wednesday and, uh, no, Thursday at one P.M., sorry, Thursday at one P.M. At the library. There is, this will be put back on the bulletin board? The agenda.
So what time did you say that was?
Thursday at one P.M. Okay, that's, anyone else? Jean, Steve?
Move adjourned.
All right, move to adjourn, who has a second?
I'll second that.
Jay, Stephen, Dave, second to adjourn. Anyone have any issue with that? So in favor, say aye. Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nay. You want to say, adjourn, seven oh four.